Second 2020 planning meeting at approximately or shortly after 4:30 PM. If whoever's taking the minutes could please call the roll.
Mr. McGory?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Zuloff?
He was here.
Mr. Zuloff, I think your microphone's muted. Okay, well, we can come back to him. Ms. Castile?
Here.
And I don't believe we have Commissioner Meiner, Mr. Jackson, or Mr. Whelan on the line. But we should have a quorum at Mr. Zuloff's.
And this is Kristen speaking, correct?
Yep.
Okay, I saw your email. Congratulations on the upcoming addition. I didn't realize that.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, all right. So we have a quorum. The, I guess the first order of business is it's listed as the appointment of the planning, of planning commissioner, a member to the CRA Housing Board. And I think that's because Mr. Galea, who has left the commission, was the Housing Board representative. Is that correct? Anybody?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, that is correct.
Sorry. Okay, so has this been discussed with staff at all? And is there a recommendation for the new person to be appointed?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, I just heard, I just joined the meeting. I was not present for the opening of the meeting or the roll call. I have no idea what you've done so far.
We just took the roll call and we're on the second item of the agenda. So this is Mr. Zuloff and you're just checking in, so they'll mark you as present.
Well, I'd like to know, so you've done nothing but take the roll? You've not done the minutes?
No.
Thank you.
We're just on the second item on the agenda, which is number two, appointment of planning commission member to the CRA Housing Board. And Mr. Galea, who has resigned due to moving, had been the CRA or the planning commission representative. So I don't know if, what the formality here is, is there a recommendation from staff as to that? Or do we just make a motion from the members themselves?
We, in the past, what, another point, another point of order, if you would please move your microphone when you're not speaking, it'd be very helpful. In the past, it's just been someone volunteered from the planning commission and it was voted upon by the rest of the body.
Okay. I guess I would ask, is anybody on the commission now interested in being appointed to the CRA Housing Board? Don't all speak at once.
So, Mr. Chairman, if nobody else is interested, I'll step in.
Okay. I guess even though I'm chairman, I can, I'd make a motion, I would make the motion to approve Mr. Zuloff as the Housing Board Representative. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, David Miller, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I guess it's appropriate to vote on the motion. Call the roll, I guess.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Sure.
And Ms. Castile?
Yes.
So it sounds like it's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Zuloff.
Do we, Mr. Chairman, do we have a new member here that I haven't?
Yes, yes, it's Ms. Jade Castile. And she's on her phone, so we don't have a photo of her or a picture to look at. Is that correct, Ms. Castile?
Yes, that's correct. I'm still working on getting the software to, oh, I think it might be, yeah. So I'm just on the phone for now, but I can hear everything going on.
That's fine.
Ms. Castile, welcome aboard. Glad to meet you, hope to meet in person one of these days.
Thank you.
Have any questions or, you know, feel free to give me a call. I've been at it for, I don't know, 17 years.
Oh, great. And I'm sorry, who is this speaking?
Mike Zuloff.
Okay.
With a Z. Yeah, you can't, you can't.
Okay.
Teams is kind of fun because you need a Skype account, so.
Okay, well, we got a lot of business to do here today, so, Mike, you can call Ms. Castile and welcome her in person. So I'm going to move on to the minutes from the June 24, 2000 meeting. Would any, first off, has anybody had a chance to review those? Okay, would anybody care to make a motion of approval for those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, David Miller, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Sure.
Okay, that's Mr. Zuloff, I think. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the content of those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I would call the roll on approval of those June 24 minutes.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff? And Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes have been approved. Moving on to the next item, approval of minutes from the July 9 to 2020 special meeting. I'm just going to skip right to the question. Would anybody care to move for approval of those July 9 minutes, the special meeting?
Mr. Chairman, David Miller, I motion approval.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion about content? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask, the roll call be taken for approval of those July 9 minutes.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
And Ms. Castile? I think you're muted.
And I think she's on the picture now.
Jade, you're unmuted. Trevor, does a thumbs up count as a yes?
No, wait a minute, let's see if we can get this straightened out. I mean, we got a long meeting tonight, let's make sure we get it straightened right from the get-go here. Jade, make my.
She said she's trying to call back in.
Yep.
Jade, leave your camera up and then use your phone. Thank you.
So we're just waiting for Ms. Castile's vote on the approval of the July 9 minutes. Ms. Castile, could you hear us? Okay. Can you indicate, are you in favor of approval of the July 9 minutes? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can you hear Ms. Castile? Because I can't.
I cannot.
All right.
Okay, can you?
Now we can. I cannot.
You found the unmuted.
Is now joining.
Okay, so can you confirm verbally that you just approved, voted to approve the July 9 minutes? Yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It's been unanimous, those minutes have been approved. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the actual adjudication hearings. The first item to come before the commission at this hearing, or I'm sorry, this meeting, is an application by Brady Sign Company on behalf of the Erie County Board of Commissioners. They have submitted an application for an electronic message board sign at the Department of Job and Family Services at 221 West Perry Street. Who wishes to present an explanation of the application, staff or the applicant themselves? Okay. Okay.
And I'll, sorry.
Trevor, if you could swear in anybody who's going to speak, would it just be on this application or on all of them?
At this point, Mr. McGory, I think it'd be easier if I just did Tom and Greg at this point, and then when anybody, when we get to the point when someone wanted to speak, the first thing we would do is swear them in.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, Tom and Greg, raise your right hand. You agree to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So, so sworn in, it's all yours.
Okay, if whoever's going to speak, just go ahead and proceed. Okay, am I understanding that, Mr. Bolz, do you want to add anything or should we just go move to Mr. Brady?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, Mr. Brady, would you like to add anything?
Uh, just.
Sorry, this is Trevor, before you, let me swear.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. If you do, you need to be sworn in.
Please, raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, yeah, just to piggyback on the earlier comments from Tom, the digital sign itself is, in some of the restrictions, those are obviously the norm for signs here in Sandusky. The good thing about this unit is it does have, as far as like brightness goes, it does have the ability to auto-adjust itself. So, for instance, let's say midday, you know, around lunchtime, it might be at peak brightness where at 10:00 PM on a, you know, at nighttime, it will basically dim itself down to 5% brightness. So you're not going to have any issues with glaring brightness at nighttime, which some other units may or may not have. But the model that we've specced here has that functionality, which is nice. We can also control that lead time, as Tom alluded to, that 10 seconds. We can control that via software as well to make sure that 10 seconds is being adhered to. So from a functionality standpoint, those conditions, I think, are easily attainable with the unit. And just as far as I know, you know, working with, working with the county here, children's services, job and family services, there's a lot going on in that building. And so I know, you know, really the main goal of adding this, making the investment in the sign, just to have that additional messaging ability to really kind of message to the public, you know, the post office across the street, just letting people know everything, all the good things that they're doing within that building, which there's a lot of pieces and parts to. So I know they're excited to add this marking component to their arsenal.
Mr. Brady, Pete McGory, is there a sign there to begin with or is this a brand-new edition totally?
This would be a new addition totally.
Okay. Anybody have questions on the commission?
Mr. Chairman, David Miller?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I'm going to abstain from any discussion on this item as the commissioners are my employer, so I will also abstain from the vote.
Okay, so noted. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Zuloff.
Well, I was going to make the motion to approve, you know, unless somebody wants to chime in before.
I'm sorry, I should have asked, I should have asked for a motion. Why don't you go ahead and make your motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve. It's, we do this all the time, it's fine without it, I just thought we'd move it along, so.
No, that's, and that, and can I, I'm, from hearing you talk on these matters in the past, I'm sure that it's conditioned upon the conditions by staff recommendation, the 10-minute or 10-second limitation, all of the things that were listed in their recommendation, is that correct?
Thank you, yeah, that's exactly what I said.
Okay, okay.
Conditioned on the, or conditioned on, condition of the conditions?
Yes.
In the staff report, thank you.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? I'll go ahead, since we're kind of short of commissioners and we have one new one, I'll go ahead and second that motion. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm very pleased to see that the auto dimming feature, I think it's appropriate on a lot of signs. Modern lighting ordinances do often require that feature in illuminated signs. So we're moving along, we're, you know, kicking and screaming, headed into the 21st century. It's a good feature and I'm glad to see it there.
Okay, any other discussion before we call the roll? Okay, hearing none, ask that we call the roll on the motion for approval?
Mr. Miller?
He's going to abstain.
Oh, that's right. Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
And Mr. McGory?
Yes. Okay, it's unanimously approved. I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, also an application by Brady Sign Company, submitted on behalf of Resort Schools LLC, to submit an application for an exterior marquee sign to be located above the first floor at the Falcon Point Lofts at 250 East Market Street. I guess this technically is a variance for a sign, a blade-type sign or marquee sign to be located on the new VGSU Cedar Point Resort School complex.
Is now exiting.
On East Market Street. Does anybody from staff want to further explain the application? And do you, do you need to be sworn in on this as well? You've already been sworn to the other one. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Horstman. Mr. Brady, would you like to add anything? And you've already been sworn in on the previous application.
Sure, I'll just, just a brief description as to the sign. It is a non-illuminated sign. There's actually an existing structure that's been tied into the building that we're utilizing and basically sandwiching with two single-faced cabinets that are aluminum cabinets with, that'll be painted white, and there's flat vinyl on each, on the face of that. So, a non-illuminated, so you don't got to worry about any kind of illumination as far as internally for these. But a pretty basic, pretty basic design, but a clean look. And I, we think it fits well with the design of the building and the overall, I guess, size and layout. So with that, that's my additional comments, so feel free to ask any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the commission? Hearing none, or is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, hearing none, I will ask. Yes. Okay, thank you, thank you. Have you received any mail against the application, contrary? Okay, so I guess we'll move to, would anybody care to make a motion on this particular application?
Mr. Chairman, I just had one, I just had one quick comment. So this is listed at 250 East Market Street, I was wondering how we got to that address number? I know that the applicant is new to that property, but I happen to know that 250 has been used by the adjoining property for many decades. They, that property, I think, uses 246, 248, and 250 for many years, so I'm, it's, it may be a trivial point, but let the record show, you know, we're not talking necessarily a particular address, but a particular parcel.
Okay, I think it's pretty, I think it's pretty clear that it's the new Bowling Green Building.
Right, but it seemed like, seemed like a good opportunity to alert the new owner that they should ask some questions about the address number.
Okay, I guess I would make, I would make the point that, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, it was on the window, 250 was on the window of that other building for many years, and I presumably they got mail there. So, again, not particularly relevant to the question, but a good time to alert folks. Anyway, and with all that, I'll make the motion to approve subject to, are there any conditions? Yeah, so motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, David Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, I guess we'll call the roll on that motion to approve.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, if I could, if I do sidebar here, Mr. Chairman, the available addresses on that block are, that corner would be something closer to 300, it would be all the way from even numbers, all the way from 200 to 298. So 250 is actually kind of odd there, unlike the, unlike the, well, yeah, anyway.
Maybe we can leave that up to the city and the post office, so.
Right, right.
Okay, moving on to the next item of business, excuse me, it's an application by Mr. Bob Waldock on behalf of 1643 Limited, I think that's an LLC, has submitted an application for a zone change for a planned unit development district at 1643 First Street, parcels, 57-04125, .000, and 570144.000. Would staff like to present details on this application?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder, if you're not speaking, please be on mute. This is the site location, it is currently zoned, general manufacturing and commercial recreation. and commercial recreation. Um, this is for a planned unit development, however, um, which uh, is a section of a zoning code which permits a use different than the underlying zoning. Uh, the applicant is proposing, proposing to a planned unit development to construct 42 three-bedroom villas and 18 two-bedroom detached patio homes. The plan also calls for various site amenities for condominium owners, including boat dockage, walking trails, a pool, and more. Um, sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of feedback in the microphone, uh, just making sure everyone has their, their phone muted if they're not speaking.
Mr. Chairman, maybe, does the moderator have the power to mute, uh, non-participants or observers or, uh, because I think that might be part of the problem. All the participants were muted. Um, and also, if I could add, if all the participants turn the volume down on, on their own device to, to the lowest level that they really need, that helps with feedback too.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mike. Uh, so the, the PUD chapter is 1155 of the Sandusky Plan and Zoning Code, which is meant to promote progressive development of land and construction thereon by encouraging, uh, planned unit developments to achieve a list of desired outcomes that are listed within that section of the code. Uh, this, the site falls within a focus area of the Sandusky Bicentennial Vision, our comprehensive plan adopted in February of 2016. The plan states for this portion of First Street, uh, to have an initiative that should be to develop the waterfront, you know, residential on former industrial sites while maintaining and/or creating public access. The applicant, through discussions regarding the site, has been supportive of the Sandusky Bay Pathway project and shows it on the PUD's preliminary plans. Uh, the Sandusky Bay Pathway is a priority initiative called out in the comprehensive plan, and we're also glad the applicant is proposing to work with the city on the pathway along First Street. Uh, the proposed PUD does meet the density requirements set forth within the chapter. Uh, parking provided for this development meets our amount required in a chapter 1149. Uh, during the design of the final development plan, the applicant will need to provide, amongst other items, engineering feasibility studies showing necessary water, sewer, drainage, electricity, telecommunications, natural gas lines, et cetera. Uh, with this being a condo development, the site will likely need an HOA to handle space needs as well as deed restrictions, uh, protective covenants and other legal documents, um, and ensure the final plan is adhered to by the owner's purchasing property within the development. These documents will have to be submitted, uh, when the final application for the development plan is approved. Uh, sightlines of the bay discussions were had with the applicant, and they did try to maximize bay views to patio homes and some to the street, especially along the southeast corner of the proper, of the property and along the western property line. Uh, thus, section of the Sandusky Bay Pathway along First Street is relatively long, and, uh, it was determined that a pathway node should occur somewhere between Cedar Point Drive and the pure track. This site just happens to be a great location for that node, as it offers, uh, flexibility to develop a shade structure or other means of shading, potentially a view and seating for users along the pathway for a break. Uh, staff does have general concerns, however, regarding the proposed five-foot serpentine wall along the southern side of the development site adjacent to First Street and the proposed Sandusky Bay Pathway. Uh, in conclusion, and knowing that this means the applicant and City of Sandusky staff must come to an agreement on the below recommendations before final designs are submitted, staff recommends approval of the application for the planned unit development to be located at 1643 First Street with the below conditions. Uh, the vital, the bicentennial vision supports reclaim, reclamation of blighted properties for residential development along First Street and creation of the Sandusky Bay Pathway. Uh, the conditions are, all applicant, all permits and approvals are obtained through the EPA, Army Corps of Engineers, ODNR, various departments, and any other applicable agency. Copies of permits and approvals should be put on file with the City of Sandusky Planning Department, either with final plan submission or prior to occupancy of the first building. The applicant continues discussion with the Sea of Sandusky regarding the Sandusky Bay Pathway and creation of a node space at the southeast corner of the property. The applicant continues discussion regarding the serpentine wall fronting First Street. These discussions may include whether or not a five-foot wall is the best interest of the area, or whether alternative materials should be used, or possibly other ideas not yet discussed. And the applicant provides names of the proposed streets. I just want to read before, um, finish, some public comments I have received, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Volz, proceed.
This is from, uh, Vimal S. Kumar. Uh, it states, "This letter is in regard to the meeting to be held on Wednesday, July 22, 2020, specifically the proposed planned unit development of, of Mr. Waldo. I applaud the vision of Mr. Waldo, and I am very happy to see our eastern neighbor utilize the natural beauty of the area or for more people to enjoy. At Lyman Harbor, we have been able to share the natural beauty and the fantastic view of the bay and Cedar Point with thousands of guests over the past 20 years. I am looking for clarification with regard to the utility easement to the eastern side of Lyman adjacent to Mr. Waldo's property. There is currently a gate in place that delineates the pathway for the utility easement and fire department utilization. I would appreciate it if you could address how the easement will be maintained at the upcoming meeting. In looking at his proposed plans, they failed to note the easement. I believe it extends in a northerly, northernly direction from First Street to the Sandusky Bay." Thank you. Uh, this is from John M. Hody. "I am in receipt of your notice for hearing on Wednesday, July 22, on the application of Bob Waldo on behalf of 1643 Limited for a zoning change at 1643 First Street. I am the president of Hody Enterprises, Inc., general partner of Lakewood Investments Limited, owner of the property at 1535 First Street. I have no objection to this request and offer my full support of saying. I do have one request, uh, which was to provide a copy of the plan for the properties, and we provided them with that plan." Uh, the last item I will read is from, uh, Ron Goldstein, President of Shades of Nantucket HOA. It states, "Good evening. We would like to re-" It written into the record that the Shades of Nantucket Homeowners Association does not oppose the planned unit development application for 1643 First Street. However, we would like to note that we are on a property dispute to the original beach property and northern strip of land along Nantucket Drive. This property has been utilized by the residents of Nantucket for over 21 years. We plan to continue ongoing discussions with 1643 Limited and hope we can come to a resolution." Uh, finally, we received another letter and packet which was, um, put into the record and also forwarded to our planning commissioners, uh, at about 3:00 PM today. Uh, however, after looking through it, it appears to relate to a civil dispute and, uh, that the applicant obtained proper environmental clearances, uh, but it was too long for us to read into the record out loud during this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volz. Um, I...
Mr. Chairman, I wonder that with, with that last, that, that last, uh, uh, comment from the public, the cover letter's only two pages long, maybe the, uh, uh, maybe Mr. Volz can give us a summary of, of what their concerns are?
Mr. Volz, are you, are you capable of doing that?
Uh, as I stated, it is, seems to be a civil dispute and, uh, that they want to know about the environmental, uh, that they obtain appropriate environmental permission to do this project.
Thank you. Mr. Zuloff, I, I have read through that. I could, um, I could attempt to summarize that. Um, I think Mr. Miller has read through it in some detail. Mr. Miller, would you wanna comment, or?
Uh, Mr. McGory, I, I think, uh, you're probably, um, maybe more precise in your language. I'd be interested in your summary, but just to, uh, caption it, it does raise significant environmental concerns, I believe, and, uh, raises the property dispute that Mr. Volz, um, already made reference to, that the Nantucket Homeowners Association also had made reference to. Um, but to, to summarize, maybe what I thought the, uh, the parties were requesting, and again, those parties were, uh, Mr. Beetley, trustee and owner at 532 and 534 Nantucket, and a Dr. Powers, uh, who is a resident at 530 Nantucket, uh, Lot 149. I, I think that, um, that these people are asking that we potentially table this until their issues have been addressed. Um, again, they are two basic categories, the EPA concerns and the, um, ownership of the beach property. I, I think they're well-represented concerns. Also, in the packet, there was an extensive, uh, comment letter from the EPA that was apparently just received and has a 30-day response requirement. So, I think, um, that gives some kind of timeline that if this matter were tabled, there would be additional information available within that 30-day EPA requirement. But with that, I'll leave it to you.
Mr. Chairman, you're muted.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I went through this and did not read every word, including a lot of legal descriptions, but, uh, what I would do is summarize, number one, other than the concern of a general citizen, I don't know why a neighbor would be totally concerned whether there's some noxious gases seeping out into a condominium which apparently is approved under the EPA, uh, letter, or an individual residence which apparently is not approved. But it seems to me that the biggest complaint is the use of this small bay beach that when this Apex property, what was the Apex property, was not used at all, the adjoining, um, boathouse development, their members were using that little beach on occasion. Now, essentially, they're claiming that under adverse possession for 21 years. That really is a civil, a civil matter that they may end up in court with Mr. Waldo over and any of his partners, I don't know. But, uh, as I read all of this closely, including the staff recommendation, nothing's gonna get built there without Corps of Engineers approval, EPA approval, and that's really what the adjoining property owners are asking for. And this, this application is just for preliminary approval, or, or approval of a preliminary PUD plan. It's far from final, and this could go nowhere, as I understand it down the road. This is simply saying, I think, this is asking in concept, do we think this would be a good concept, subject to EPA approval. And again, unless the EPA approves it, nothing's gonna happen. So, that's the gist of what I think we're dealing with, and I'd be happy to hear any comments from anybody else. Um...
Through, Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you know the applicants are on, on the, we have the, uh, the architect, uh, Mr. Waldo and, uh, Mr. Hancock on as well.
And, and I'm presuming both of them would like to speak, so perhaps, uh, uh, staff counsel could swear them both in?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make sure that we have, uh, the questions about the application for the staff covered first, if you, if, if that's, uh, okay. Um...
Do you have questions, do you have, you have questions for the staff?
Well, I, just, we, we usually, we usually do that before we, uh, so, uh, my only question is, how much, how much discussion has there been between the staff and the, and the applicant regarding, uh, this, this application and, and, uh, and, and is, is the, is the applicant aware of all the staff's concerns?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, Mr. Zuloff. We have been, uh, I have personally been in discussions with the applicant for about, uh, two months about the, once he submitted the application, just over a month ago. Um, however, he has been in conversations with various departments within the city for probably a year, and, um, he has been, uh, he has worked with us, uh, with certain issues. However, I wasn't privy to earlier conversations with former planning director, uh, Ms. Byington, so I'm not, I can't speak to those meetings. I was not there. Um, but I just wanna let you know of that, and, uh, Mr. Waldo may be able to give probably more, um, long-term discussion recollection than I would be able to.
Okay, well, that, that, that satisfies, satisfies my concern. Uh, thank you. Um...
Okay, um, I, I would then turn to Mr. Hancock or Mr. Wa, and/or Mr. Waldo for any comments, uh, they would like to make. And if they're going to speak, they need to be sworn in.
So, I ask Mr. Hancock and Mr. Waldo, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Waldo, Mr. Hancock, one of you, go ahead.
I'd like to start. This is Bob Waldo. And then, John, if you can follow up relative to anything on the beach area. Um, this property received in 2014 a covenant not to sue based on a no further action letter that was provided by the former owner. In that covenant not to sue, the property was listed with the EPA as an industrial commercial site. About a year and a half ago, we applied with the EPA to change that zoning to what they call a remedy revision, which is a revision to the document to allow residential property to be located. We've worked with the EPA now, um, going on almost two years. As of this afternoon, uh, in my conversation with the head of, of DIR, which is, uh, Division of Environmental Response and Revitalization, we are working with them and speed this afternoon a draft copy, um, to discuss what needs to happen to get restricted residential on this site. We're probably another, uh, couple of weeks before that final approval will come. And when I made the application for the PUD, um, I noted on the application that we can't, we, meaning 1643 Limited, cannot do anything until the state of Ohio approves that transfer of the property from commercial industrial to restricted residential. Um, that restricted residential would allow us to build, uh, residential property on the site, and it would meet the environmental covenant for the state of Ohio to have residential zoning for this site. So, as it relates to the document that you received and I received, uh, from Nantucket, um, I don't know that that's gonna apply. As it relates to the, um, issue relative to the civil matter, uh, Mr. Volz and I talked earlier, and I asked him whether we needed to have counsel on, on the conversation, because we have met with Nantucket Association representative, Mr. Beetley, about a week ago, and a, an attorney representing the association along with our corporate attorney, and we are in discussion on trying to work out what we need to do. You are correct that they are looking at the property under an adverse possession claim, which we dispute, and I think that if you want the technical side of it from an engineering standpoint, Mr. Hancock can talk about that, but I don't know that you wanted to go through that timing and that history.
Thank you, Mr. Waldo. Uh, Mr. Hancock, would you care to add anything?
Mr. Waldo, or, Mr. Uh, Hancock, you actually muted yourself.
I did.
I can hear you now.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, I don't, not sure it's appropriate to really talk about... I'm not sure it's appropriate to really talk about the merits of this civil matter here in this forum, and I'm really not prepared to get into details.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. I guess that concludes your thoughts at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
I would agree that the dispute over the piece of property is not terribly relevant other than the final status of ownership could influence the plan. We need to know what this thing's going to look like, and that is a little question mark at the moment. So, you know, we're going to get a lot of things answered. I think I'm very excited about this thing, by the way. For the record, this is a really cool thing. It's very appropriate for that site, in my opinion, to have quality residential structures on that site and residential use. So I think there's a lot of room to, in my opinion, to work on it. The PUD gives a lot of latitude to an applicant. The people normally, you know, have zoning regulations, and those are normally adhered to without a variance or zoning change or conditionally used permit. In this, in the case of a planned unit development, the developer -- and I did contribute to and pressed for a PUD ordinance years ago while I was on this commission. What it -- the PUD allows the developer to do a whole lot of things that they couldn't do otherwise in a much simpler way. And I love that flexibility, especially for larger projects, and this would be a larger project. On the other hand, you know, it's a negotiation. So, you know, we -- this commission doesn't have to approve it. Also, there's a lot going on here, a lot of moving parts, and I think it's important that we be satisfied that we're doing the right thing before we move on, including considering the possibility that this is a project that's looked at holistically. We're endorsing, we're approving a project. We have to ask ourselves, among other things that gets overlooked in communities that are new to planned unit developments, what happens if it's not complete? What if you do part of it and then you don't finish it? What are you left with? Okay? You know, history, the last 100 years have shown several projects that were never completed. They got partway done, and they either were satisfied with it or something else that, but for whatever reason didn't get completed. So this is something we have to think about and ask about. Sometimes there are performance bonds involved, sometimes there are other agreements, including an agreement on the phasing of the project. Okay? I don't see anything, I haven't thought about it enough, but I look at this project and say, well, most of it, you know, I don't care, I'd be happy with part of the project. But I can also envision a possibility of doing part of it, never completing the rest, and saying, well, I never would have approved that. So we have to make sure that what we're -- we know what we're approving and know what's going to happen and what the phasing and sequence is, I think, before we approve it. And I don't think we need to take a lot of time. I think, you know, waiting one more meeting to get some of these other questions. You know, I always have that last document that we were emailed, it's 75 pages. Okay? Now, I know most of it's an EPA report, but I was -- I read the comments from others, and I really haven't seen those in writing, I don't think. So as long as we don't rush this thing, I think we got something really good going here. Thank you.
Mr. Volz, I have a question for you, just so I'm clear. What the applicant is requesting is for the Planning Commission to approve their preliminary proposal for a planned unit development. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So this is not a final approval. This is just saying, we like the idea, we like the general concept, and if we approved it, or if we accepted it subject to the staff conditions, I mean, it would be conditioned on final approval of all the little details and also approval by EPA, Corps of Engineers, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. Correct. And to Mr. -- through Mr. Chairman and Mr. Zuloff, there was a schedule of development given to us by Mr. Waldock. I'm not sure if you saw that or not in the packet, but I can read it to you if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, it'd be -- I'd welcome a summary. Even the packet, I wasn't able to review fully because I didn't have it until today, partly my fault, but I don't check my email hourly either. So let me -- while you continue, I'm going to get to that page.
Sure. The proposed schedule of development is for infrastructure, for one half of the single-family homes and villas to be completed first. The single-family houses would be built three at a time. The villas would be built, one or possibly two buildings at a time. There are, at this time, there are no completion dates, as it will tie into various other factors. And then it speaks to the need for the EPA approval letter, which is kind of the lynchpin to the whole thing. To that, it's back to the chairman's point about preliminary approval. This is just the preliminary approval. Things can shift slightly, and then when the final approval comes, it would become a more locked-in document, which at that point, every change would have to go back to the Planning Commission, whether it be minor or major. So that's where.
Okay, and that might include phasing, and because -- so I'm just asking the commissioners to keep in mind that, think about the eventuality that only part of this gets done, and can you live with that? I think maybe, given what, in a general way, I think I can at this point, but we have to think about that.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Zuloff, one of the application contents requirements is the final schedule of development, which speaks a detailed description of the progression and design principles for the buildings.
Mr. Volz, Pete McGory, the chairman, question for you. Am I correct that if we voted for approval per the staff recommendation with all the current conditions, nothing towards construction could be done just on that approval?
Yes, that is correct. And then this preliminary plan would need to go to the City Commission, which would also need to give its approval. And then basically, it has an 18-month timeframe for the applicant to get us the final approval.
If there's no final approval of a final plan, there's no construction.
That is correct.
Okay. We're kind of short commission members here today, even though we have a quorum. To just speed things along and to perhaps permit or pursue further comments and discussions, I'm going to move that the applicants, that the application be approved subject to each and every staff condition, one through four.
Mr. Chairman, I second the chair's motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comments on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, David Miller. I appreciate how you characterized this in the beginning, and I also appreciate the applicant updating us to current status of the discussion with the EPA. To me, there is some significant angst based on my previous experience with EPA permitting that that can be a very protracted process, so I feel encouraged that things are moving forward and that there's likely resolution of those issues. I understand the condition of EPA permits, and I appreciate that. So with all that being said, I am very supportive of PUDs in general, and I think this is an excellent opportunity to use that process to make a really nice development that can really benefit the city. One other little concern that I'd raise, and it falls within the constraints of EPA permitting, I'm sure, but I have a particular sensitivity for the Class 3 wetland there. And while I understand the applicant won't be building anything without an EPA permit, I do also believe that grading on-site and including changing the elevation toward the bay on the northern end of the site and the potential implications for how a wetland would drain and all that are probably part of that EPA permitting process that, again, I'm pretty interested in.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other comments or observations?
Mr. Chairman, I know we're under record-high water levels for the last two years, but I did find it almost comical, I have to say, to see. I presume the silt, the fences, I think it might have been silt fence around the, if not just stakes, I don't remember what was there, but it appeared, you know, that the delineation was arguably wrong because the delineation was thoroughly underwater for long periods of time. It may have, I suppose it could be correct at the time, but I have to say I'm skeptical of it, only because, you know, we've got to have a lot of hydro soils in that area. It's so low, we've had flooded streets and everything else. I hope we maintain some flexibility in that site plan to make sure that we adjust the plan for what we've learned about what's flood-prone and what's likely to be submerged for any period of time and what isn't. What we have is a, well, veronal pools, I guess, is what we have, and the pooling has probably gotten deeper than it's been in a long, long time. But as long -- I'm just going to make this comment so that I can let the applicant and the engineer know that I hope we're flexible on that site plan, considering what we're learning there.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Any further comment on the motion? Hearing none, it's been moved and seconded, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Mr. Chairman, just one more.
Yes.
I worry that, I think this commission is taking very seriously all the comments, including the last one, and I worry that we are not dismissive, this commission is not dismissive of any of the comments, even though we discussed them a bit and talked about, discussed how relevant they are, that we are thoroughly considering all the comments in this application, and we're not dismissive of any of them. And I certainly, I certainly am considering all of the comments from the public.
I think that's a good observation, and I agree with you, and certainly, we are not dismissive of any of those. I guess I'm just willing to rely on the EPA and the Corps of Engineers to make sure that state and federal law and guidelines are met with respect to any kind of construction. And I'm just not so sure that where you can build a condo under the current non-suit letter but can't build a single-family residence, I don't quite understand the difference in the level of protection. But again, that's going to be between this applicant and the EPA. So I'm willing to let the state and federal authorities determine what can be built here. Personally, I think what's good for the city of Sandusky is for this type of project to go forward. I think there are going to be some major hurdles here to get it done, but they're not insurmountable. So again.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, but this board has the authority to insert its opinion on that matter as well, just for what it's worth.
Okay. Any further comments, or should I -- we ready to call the question? I'm going to go ahead and ask that the roll be called on the motion.
Mr. Zuloff?
Mr. Zuloff?
Mr. Zuloff, your microphone's muted, it looks like. Okay, we'll come back to him. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McGory?
Mr. McGory, your microphone is muted, too.
Okay. Geez, it goes back and forth. Yes, on the motion.
Ms. Cassiel?
Yes.
And Mr. Zuloff, are you there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm back, Olivia, I don't know what's going on here. On the motion, my vote, Zuloff's vote is yes.
Okay.
That was subject to all the conditions, right?
Correct, that's correct.
You were very clear on that.
Okay. So it's unanimous that the application for approval of preliminary PUD has passed the Planning Commission. So moving on to the next matter of business.
Mr. Chairman, I would, Mr. Chairman, a point of order, I would caution us, with only four members present, I would object to characterizing the vote as unanimous to the, you know, any other recording as unanimous. Maybe not in this one, but this one doesn't have to go to the City Commission, right?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, this does, but we will make sure it does not state unanimous on the letter to the City Commission.
Right, it could be deceptive if there's only four votes. Thank you.
I'll re-characterize that as saying it is passed.
Thank you.
Or been approved, let's put it that way. Moving on to the next matter, it's an application submitted by Mr. Bob Waldock on behalf of Waldock Properties 2, which has submitted an application for an amendment to the zoning map for the following parcels located along First Street in Sandusky. And those are all lot numbers, 408, 409, 410, 411, 412, 413, 414, 415, all on First Street in the city of Sandusky. I would ask that staff further illuminate us on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, I recommend the next application, we just say that. I recommend the next application, we, we just say that the parcel's noted on screen or something along those lines, so you don't have to read them all.
Okay, all right, I didn't know if it needed to be in the record that way, okay. I like reading those long notes.
There you go.
That was impressive.
So noted.
This, this is for a site along First Street, it's currently zoned, single-family residential, and across the street from the site in the previous application on First Street. It is also adjacent to, you may recall, the property to the east of the proposed parcels that are being rezoned. This way, also went through site plan approval, which you may also remember for a personal storage building, the property next door. It's important to note, the Bicentennial Comprehensive Plans outline a few priorities for these neighborhoods, which include the creation of the pathway, the, to redevelop vacant land and infill to extend and stabilize single-family neighborhoods, and also target areas around First Street for residential stabilization and infill and mixed-use residential development. As stated, an application previously came to Planning Commission in 2018, 2019 to rezone a few parcels in this area. At that time, the Planning Commission had requested that staff gather additional information regarding the area in that vicinity. About 25% of the units on First and Second Streets near this area were found to be owner-occupied. That was requested at that time by the Planning Commission to know, and staff had at that time concerns about how a change to commercial recreation zoning would impact the existing residents in this neighborhood. It just, mostly just because of the various permitted uses in commercial recreation, and it's not so much the commercial recreation district itself, however, it steps down to general business districts, which also steps down to various other districts, which permits automotive repair shops, drive-through businesses, general storage, and so forth. Understanding the goals set forth within this area by the city's comprehensive plan, and also reasons stated in the staff report, we do believe that after seeing the rezoning the last time through the planning commission, that there is potential that these priorities could assist with development of these lands. However, staff believes there will need to be precautions put in place to limit the type of uses permitted in the new commercial recreation zoning. Types of development that staff believes would not be ideal would include developments such as gas stations, automotive repair shops, drive-through fast food, and those sorts of uses. Staff, when we received this application in the following, staff has begun looking at rezoning of the remaining surrounding parcels, and this is likely to occur in the coming months. Staff was not prepared to bring this during this month's meeting due to not having enough time to gather appropriate data. However, due to the existing surrounding uses, staff would like to also explore adding an overlay district to limit uses to that neighborhood so that they are not, so that uses are not detrimental, but rather beneficial. This would include drive-through businesses, gas stations, and storage buildings as a primary use. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed zoning amendment for the above-referenced parcels from R140, single-family to commercial recreation. I do have two public comments, which are for this applicant's application and the following, if you'd like me to read them.
Please proceed.
The first one is from Northley Lewis Page at 1842 Third Street. She said, "I am concerned with rezoning as this could create further flooding issues. How can future projects ensure that it doesn't add to the flooding already occurring? How can current property owners make sure their properties are kept safe if more buildings are put up, adding more strain to the existing storm sewer and sanitary sewer? There has already been flooding issues." The applicant, the person also states, "We have concerns about creating problems if apartments are being built due to problems flowing out of the apartments." Vanessa Jordan at 1017 Clinton Street spoke on behalf of her mother at 1829 Third Street. She states, "Curious as to what the long-term plans are for these parcels. We want to make sure that commission knows that this is a historically black neighborhood and that we want to be respected. Most of the people don't have the ability to come to a meeting or be heard digitally. We don't want to live next to a McDonald's. We would rather see houses, a habitat house, something, not doctor's storage buildings." And with that, that is all I have. The applicant is still on on the phone, if you have further questions for him or I.
Mr. Volz, Pete McGory, I do have a question. Initially, you said you somehow wanted to limit the CR, Commercial Recreation zoning, but if, but then you indicated that staff is recommending approval. I mean, is there some way to limit it after the approval?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, we would do an overlay district. Ideally, we would do all of these parcels together as a full rezoning with that overlay at the same time. We just, we're not able to do that during this, this meeting for these applicants.
I understand. I mean, I mean, is there, is there a real timeline, deadline crisis on these applications for right now with immediate upcoming plans? If there's a thought process of moving forward generally to get these applicants where they want to go, how quickly could we do that if we table these?
I believe we'd have to, I'd have to talk to my teammate, Tom Horseman, and we should be able to get something in two months back to you if we untable at next month's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if we could roll back just a little bit here, I think, before we get into discussion of the merits and 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 the timeline, I'd like to better understand the application itself. I understand this is an application for rezoning, so that would, that's not what the staff is working on, the staff is working on an overlay, or, that's what I'm hearing so far, that's the way I'm reading the application, maybe I'm misreading it. So I think we, this, this commission needs to fully understand what's going on here. Based on a prior application in the area, I think it was, it was the storage building, there was much discussion about this, and there was discussion of the staff working on reviewing the zoning in the entire area vis-à-vis the comprehensive plan, and working on changing, making some recommendations about zoning changing, changes, and that would, an overlay would make sense there. But am I, I don't think this, this application is for, so would it be wise to do a zoning change when staff is working on something similar but a little different? This is, this is a question for Mr. Volz.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Zuloff. Our intention is to rezone, if these move forward, to rezone the blocks that surround these, at least to square it off as much as we can, so that the properties that are in between and surrounding these properties are also zoned commercial recreation. With that, we would also like to institute an overlay district on top to protect, protect the existing residents and also future residents from the not-so-good uses permitted in in the districts that are in general business and below.
So let's hear it.
Okay, but that doesn't quite answer the question. The question is, this application is just for the zoning change, that, this application would not incorporate the overlay that you're talking about, and how would that get done? And what if, what if the former happens without the latter?
Yes, thank you. This is Jay Castile, I just want to say I have the same question.
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Ms. Castile and Mr. Zuloff, that would, they would be two separate zoning changes. The overlay district, would it be its own zoning change? And then the other zoning change would be to a commercial recreation district? So they would, you could take them at the same meetings, and they would occur concurrently.
So you're saying it could happen as, you're saying it could happen as a single piece of legislation?
I, I do not believe it could, but as a single piece of legislation, it would have to be at the same meetings, however, or one rezoning with an overlay coming after the
I don't understand why it couldn't be a single piece of legislation, other than our obligation to hear and make a recommendation and move forward with this particular, this particular application, should we approve it? We could deny this application and then incorporate a recommendation for what's contained in this application along with the overlay, and achieve the same result and achieve the overlay that you're concerned with.
I believe a, an overlay, we would, we don't have a district that incorporates an overlay district, so I don't believe that you could do a rezoning with that, it would include the desired overlay and the same legislation. I think the overlay would have to be a separate item.
I, I don't, I don't imagine the law director is here.
He's, he's still on, he's just muted, but.
Yes, I'm here. My, my opinion is that all of our legislations have one issue, so I wouldn't, I would see this as two different pieces of legislation. Could be presented at the same meeting, but if, if there's time for zoning to put that together, but they would be two different pieces of legislation.
Are you making a statement about our tradition or what the law would permit?
No, based off of what the law says.
Thank you.
This is Pete McGory, Chairman, again. My concern, I, I'm in favor of what I think the applicants are wanting to do and what we ended up doing with that resident storage building on the south side of First Street when we rezoned that parcel, but we knew what was going in there right then at the time. And in this situation, I don't know if these applicants have any thought about a drive-through gas station or a convenience gas station, but if, if that's not in the city's plan, I'm a little hesitant to go ahead and say, "Let's do this all right now," leaving that So I, I'm, I'm wondering if we could hear from not only Mr. Waldock, but Mr. Rengel, who appears to be asking for the same thing on his parcel of property in the same area. I'm wondering if there is an immediate deadline, knowing that the city and the commission seem to be heading in the same direction that the applicants are, perhaps only with some limitations. I see Mr. Mr. Rengel, I don't know, this is an adjudication, do we need to swear Mr. Rengel in before he answers a question?
Technically, as an officer of the court and an attorney, Mr. Rengel's always sworn in, but I can do it real quick if he wants.
Okay, go ahead.
He's bringing her right hand in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Rengel, you've heard what's been said so far. I think we're all heading in the same direction. Is there an immediate deadline? Are there plans that that you have right now that we couldn't hold off for a month?
We, we have no immediate plans, no.
Okay, and, and I guess I would ask Mr. Waldock the same question.
There are no immediate plans, although we are trying to tie some construction together with what we want to do across the street.
Okay, I'll go back to staff and Mr. Volz. From your standpoint as a, as a planning professional for the city, do you think it would be preferable to tie these thoughts all together a little, little better, rather than open-ended, go ahead and change zoning, but in the back of our mind, knowing that we're trying to not give it the full zone change? That's not a very good question, but.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I do think we always are proponents of doing a more cohesive zoning change, which would include, which would really landlocked parcels or keep parcels separated from adjoining parcels of different zonings. We don't want a noxious use next to a residential house. I would be curious, and I would have to talk to the two applicants to know what their feedback is in regards to the proposed overlay that we would also propose at the same time, and whether they're amicable to that, which would ultimately be up to this commission. But I, I think that over a larger zoning, which would create a commercial recreation district and join it up with the Cedar Point dormitories would be beneficial, especially between First and Third Street.
And, but I'm, I'm, Mr. Chairman, just, just a second, Mr. Mr. Volz, I'm particularly concerned about your, your expressed reservations, let's call it that. In other words, somehow, because those aren't in place if we just change the zoning today.
That is correct, although I do think we could move fairly quickly on putting those on. It's just as easier just to do everything all at once in terms of rezoning all of the parcels in the area, rather than spot zoning.
Yeah, well, I'm not a fan of delaying things any more than they need to be delayed, but I'd sure like to do this right and work with both applicants to get them where they want to go, but within the limitations that the city is saying they think are reasonable. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Zuloff.
I, I think, I, I think there may, I'm hoping there's a consensus that in, in the spirit of doing this right, doing it expediently and getting it right the first time, I, I think there might, might be a support for a motion to table. So to test that, I will make the motion to, to table until next month, further discussion on this particular application.
Is there a sentence? Okay, Ms. Castile seconded, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we could call the roll.
Mr. McGory?
Yes, yes to table.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
And Ms. Castile?
Yes.
All right, motion approved. I see nothing further on the agenda, and it's been a relatively.
Mr. Chairman, we, we would need to do the same thing for the other application.
I'm sorry, yeah, I, I'm sorry.
If that's desired, also, just a reminder to everyone.
Is now exiting.
We would need to re-notify all the adjoining property owners whenever this is not tabled and put, put back on the agenda. But if we work with the applicants and do a larger-scale rezoning, that would come anyways. So I just wanted to make those two points.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I did say in my motion, which was technically incorrect, table it and take it up at the next meeting, technically, that would have been a, a motion to suspend debate and, and take it up at the next meeting, which would place it on the agenda, and we would obviate the need to have a vote to place it back on the agenda and delay it for two months. If, if that was taken to be technically a, a motion to suspend debate and take it up at a specific time, I did mention the next meeting. So I, I think that's what we have, is, is, I believe that we properly have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Mr. Volz, is that going to be an adequate timeframe?
Trevor, our law director, was going to say something.
Yeah, Trevor, go ahead.
So the issue of the tabling, the only concern I have is as long as that the zoning department gets the adequate notices out to folks, as long as they cover that, whether we hear next meeting or two meetings out, the, the issue of making sure people know is solved. So no need to put, you know, substance over.
Sure.
Well, I'm also equally concerned that, that staff is going to have sufficient time to deal with the limitations or restrictions. Again, the concept here is not to do an opening. Uh, again, the concept here is not to do an open-ended zoning to commercial recreation, but to have some, some level of limitation, which I think may be acceptable to the applicants, but that needs all to be discussed between applicants and staff, and if, if thirty days is adequate time, then great, if it's not, is that going to be sufficient?
We can, if we have to, we can delay, you know, we can, we can, uh, you know, suspend debate again if we have to, but we can hope that it, that we're ready to go by next meeting and burn that bridge when we get to it.
Okay. So, the, we've already voted and approved to the table or suspend debate, I guess, and bring it up at the next meeting for agenda number, item number eight, Mr. Waldock. Um, so that matter is resolved. I'm going to move on to the net, the last item, which is item number nine, a similar application by Mr. D Jeffrey Rengel on behalf of RLL Properties LTD, and I, I'm just going to not stay all the, the numbers again for the parcels, but they're all along, I guess, Second Street in the city of Sandusky and Third Street.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, almost the exact same report or presentation, so I'll just skip, uh, just go over the site location. This is, um, this kind of summarizes why in the previous application, we were concerned with, uh, doing these rezonings. As you can see, they are, they're clustered together, however, they, um, do have various parcels between them in certain instances, um, and we want to try to limit that as much as possible. Um, so when staff would like to do a full rezoning, uh, we would include these parcels and the parcels in between them, if that is possible. Um, the rest is pretty much the same.
Seems totally logical. Uh, all right, um, is it, given that we've discussed this very same issue, is there a motion to suspend debate and table on this application?
Mr. Chairman, uh, since you called for a motion, I would make that, that motion to, uh, suspend debate and, uh, take it up again at the, at the next meeting, but having said, having made, well, anyway, having made that motion, I would welcome hearing from the applicant.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Rengel, would you like to speak up? He already did.
We, we, point of order, we, we need a second or not.
Yeah. Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is David Miller, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any, any further discussion from the commission on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, you, you did invite, uh, comments from the-
Mr. Rengel. Mr. Rengel, uh, I, you've been sworn in already, uh, and you've made some comments, maybe you could restate your comments.
Yeah, yes, um, as, as I indicate, I have no objection, because we have no immediate plans for development of the property. We've had inquiries, but nothing, nothing has gone to the level of purchase agreement, so at this point, we don't have any objections to table it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, or Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll, staff will contact Mr. Rengel and Mr. Waldock and, uh, discuss the, um, the limitations, so we'll be working with them.
Thank you, Mr. Volz. Um, so it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, perhaps we could call the roll on the motion to suspend, uh, discussion and table the motion until next meeting.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zulov?
Yes.
And Ms. Castillo?
Yes.
Uh, motion is passed. Uh, looking at the agenda, there's nothing further. Um, it's been a long meeting and very detailed meeting, so, uh, I would solicit a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Jay Castillo, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, meeting adjourned. Um, thank you very much all.